I pledge my flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda is the approval minutes from the February fifth commissioner meeting.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
New business, legal issues, Mr. Clutter.
Nothing, good morning, gentlemen.
We keep getting luckier and luckier on that kind of stuff.
Good start.
It is. Next on the agenda is a request for an additional cellphone cellphone from Kent Eastwood.
Yes, Mr. Eastwood is requesting an additional cellphone for the investigator that he is hiring.
They'll be paying for it?
They're paying for it, so it's no cost to the county budget.
All right, any questions?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All right, next is Max Minenhall on quotes we have from several different quotes to cover them.
Good morning, yeah, so I have four equipment quotes, I'll just run through them one by one. First one is with Hair Chevrolet, it's for a sixty-five-hundred chassis, twenty-six-thousand-pound chassis. We're replacing our chipper truck, the truck it's replacing is a two-thousand-one truck. So it's, well, it's seen a good life, price on that one is sixty-nine thousand nine hundred eighty fifty cents. I will be coming back for a quote for the bed on that one, once we get that from the.
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
The second one I've got is with Southeastern Equipment, this is to replace a rubber tire roller. Rubber tire roller is a twenty-one-year-old. Source well quote on that one's one thousand, or hundred, one hundred thousand eight fifty-one.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
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 Third one I have is a quote from Westside Tractor for twenty-one thousand two hundred thirty dollars. This is to purchase a reclamer for the front of our road graders. This is a piece of equipment we use to reclaim the gravel off the edges of the road so that we can not have to put down as much ground.
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
And final equipment quote is with GCI Slingers, this is our truck bodies, our dump truck bodies. We have two chassis that we don't have bodies for yet, so this is for them at sixty-four thousand nine hundred eighteen dollars seventy-six cents.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
And then the last quote that I have for today is with SLB Pipe Solutions. This is for the prosecutor's building, prosecutor's building has a cast iron pipe that has actually collapsed in one section. We've had problems with this pipe in the past, and we got it cleaned out, and it was working well for a couple of years. And then the last couple of weeks, we've had some pretty serious issues. They're gonna come in, resurface that pipe, seal it, and put a cure-to-place liner in it. So it'll be essentially putting a brand-new pipe in place, inside the existing cast iron pipe, all the way from our cleanout inside the building to the main line in the alley. Quote for that is twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars. We've spoke with the prosecutor, we're gonna do, we're going to do that the week of the eleventh, March eleventh, and they're going to work from home, they want to shut the entire building down.
I met with Max last week with the prosecutor and got, they got the agreements on when they would do it. This is actually something that goes back a long way. This pipe's given us trouble since we've owned the building to some extent, so this is, it's always been coming, it's just a matter of when to fail.
Yeah, it's been dug up once before inside the building, they will have to dig up a section of it and replace a section of it, but it'll be the last time I put that liner.
I move to approve. Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, twenty-twenty-three Bridge Inspection Report.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
All right, so this is a kind of a summary of our inspection findings from this last fall. We performed the inspections in September, so today I have with me Bailey Spear, he's one of my team leaders. He actually performed a lot of the inspections in mostly your western and northern bridges, and I handle most of the southern and eastern bridge inspections. So I kind of wanted him here today to, so you can meet him and introduce you to him. I don't know if you guys have had a chance to meet Bailey or not, but he is. So last fall, we did inspect one-hundred-and-ninety-four bridges, which would be called a routine inspection, so that's all your bridges that are currently on the system. And we had the one fracture critical bridge, that's your steel truss, bridge number thirty-two, go from the northwestern part. Coming up this year, this fall, we have eleven bridges that are on a twelve-month inspection cycle, so we'll be looking at those, and you can see the numbers there in those bridges. Since twenty-twenty-one, and we got this through twenty-twenty-four because Bridge One-O-Two just opened here this year, so we wanted that included in it. So as you can see, Nick's been really busy getting some of your bridges replaced and improving conditions, and we're all doing a really good job. Anytime we've had something come up, they've responded pretty quickly. And one of the issues that was a really big thing since we started inspections in twenty-twenty-one was all the new posting signs, and I'm sure you guys are aware of the ordinances and all the hassles that that's been. So that was a big project, so I know Jeff has been really busy putting in signs, and hopefully we're pretty much through all that until Federal Highway comes down and says, hey, we want to change it again, and then we all go out and we change them all again, so that was part of the issues, the Federal Highway. I think what was happening was throughout the country, people were posting things different ways, so they kind of wanted to make sure, if you drove anywhere in the U.S., you can see the same type of signs, and they wanted to make sure that everything was symmetrical throughout the country. So I think that was a large part of why they did all the sign changes. This chart here, graph here, kind of shows your deck ratings. We went ahead and showed after twenty-twenty-one inspections where we were, where we are after twenty-twenty-three, and kind of an example of the county bridges throughout the state from the database, where you guys stand. Overall, really good, I mean, you have very few poor-conditioned decks out there. There's a pretty good percentage that's in the fair category, and Nick has asked us to prepare him a database for preventative maintenance. And a lot of that goes to deck, any type of deck treatments, whether it be surface seals, whether it be an overlay, whether it be a thin overlay or a concrete overlay. So currently working with Nick on that to see what we can't pick one to. And that's usually in your fair category, that yellow category is where you can really do some of that preventative maintenance to extend the life of the bridges. So superstructure, these would be your beams or the main load carrying part of your bridge. And as you can see, definitely some improvements since twenty-twenty-one, actually a really good improvement there. Statewide, actually a little bit better on the most part than most of the county bridges in the state. Still some, always work to be done there though. And substructures, these have improved somewhat. Some of this comes into play with being scour critical bridges, which is on an upcoming slide. So part of that comes in with some of the older bridge types and unknown foundations, we just don't know how deep and stuff they are, so they're considered scour critical, so a lot of times that shows up here in your substructure rating. Calverts, again, showing some good improvement the last two years. A few more worse in the poor condition than throughout the state, but we are definitely seeing an improving conditions. Here's that, kind of that slide I was talking about, your scour critical bridges. A little bit higher than the statewide, but we definitely, he's gone out, Nick's had the guys go out and do some riprap work on some of the bridges, so that helps take it out of that scour critical, so. Well, the next, they're posted for load, as you can see, some of the bridges were replaced that were previously posted, so some of that has gone down, obviously better than what the state is there, fourteen point one percent. Currently, no closed bridges that we are aware of anyway. And then your twelve-month frequency, normally we do routine inspections on a two-year cycle. So if a bridge is in poor condition, we'll go out and do it on a twelve-month cycle. So this is really reflective of the poor condition of a bridge, whether it be the deck, the substructure, or superstructure. So that kind of really directly reflects here, so as you can see, definitely improvement there, better than the statewide average bridge. This is just kind of more of an informational slide, comparing your average length of the bridge, your deck widths, total deck areas, just kind of give you an idea of where your bridge is compared to other bridges throughout the state. A little bit shorter, a little bit wider, overall deck areas, a little bit smaller, but not a lot. We did have a couple of issues that came up this fall that the guys responded to really quickly. We had some bridge rail damages, this was Bridge One Twenty-Six that Bailey inspected. We filed a critical finding, as the state requires, if we find something like this, that's a safety concern, immediate safety concern to the public, that we notify the state and Nick that work needs to be done as quickly as possible. So the guys responded really well and went out there and replaced the rail there. And then the same thing on Bridge One Eighty-Two, the west side of the bridge rail there was completely separated from the slab. This one ended up being a little bit more of a fix than the other because just access to it was tough for the contractor to use scaffolding, so they ended up using a on-the-bridge-type machine that has a platform that they could work off of. I know Mike Barowski did a lot of work trying to organize all that, and final product turned out really well though. They were able to patch the bridge, because the guardrail contractors wouldn't come out and do this because the concrete itself had to be patched first before they could install the rail. So had to have a contractor come out and patch it and put up the rail, so. They actually did that, it was what, about, within six weeks, I think, with the finding, they were able to, which is really quick.
It's on Main Street in Whitestown, too.
Yeah, yeah, pretty busy, you don't want to stand out in the middle of that road very long, but you can, so. Priority bridges, breaking down to replacements and rehabilitations. Worked with Nick, Nick mostly does a lot of this as far as figuring out what year he wants to look at doing these improvements. So as you can see there, there's four bridges on the schedule from now until twenty-twenty-six, at least planned, and then there's like six rehabilitations there, so. One of the things that's always a bit of a struggle is determine whether you can rehab a bridge or replace a bridge. And a lot of times it comes down to, okay, what's, what's the immediate thing that really needs the work done to it? And you figure out, okay, well, how long of a life, if we do that work, how long of a life will the bridge have? And then you have to kind of look at the other elements on the bridge and say, do we think the rest of the bridge can last as long as what this repair is going to do? If it doesn't, then you probably say, okay, then we probably need to replace it. If it doesn't, say, okay, well, it's probably candidates for rehab. That's not always the case, because sometimes you need to widen the bridge, like Whitestown, I mean, a lot of development there, so a lot more traffic, a lot more things that you might need to look at, so. It's always, just because something says rehab, doesn't mean that, you know, you might not, you might need to replace this one, try and get at. It's not always black and white, I mean, you have to kind of look at the situation, everything else that's going on, and how long, what of a life do you think you're going to get out of it, so. Obviously, need for funding is there, you can see the estimated cost, they're up there, so. Definitely need to continue funding and finding ways to fund our bridges. This is kind of a sample of the maintenance items that need to be done on the various bridges. Nick gets this, and the guys can go in, they can check off when work's done, they can put a date in the column there. It's kind of a different thing, like there's erosion control, like on Bridge Twelve there, a varmint hole under the south end bend, so if you want to go in there and fix that, or if you don't, then the, usually what'll happen is the approach will start to settle where the hand was dug out a hole, and that's usually the next call you get, it's like, hey, there's a hole in the road. With that, gentlemen, have any questions for us?
I do have a, a simple question, I think, but sometimes my questions aren't very simple. On, on bridge repairs and wear and tear on them, and I don't know why I thought of this, is there a difference between bridges that are on gravel roads and paved roads?
There is to some extent, I mean, you're typically gonna find, especially your bridge decks, are gonna be in worst condition on gravel roads. A lot of that's because if the gravel ends up sitting on the deck for an extended period of time, it holds moisture on your deck, and that's why it's important to kind of keep the decks clear going, especially if it's a concrete deck like that. Well, when we go out, we'll change the decks anyways, we can, if it's, if it's a really thick layer of gravel, it's completely over it, we won't mess with it, but it's just like a thin edge, we actually shovel, brim it off, and kind of clean it off so we can change the deck. But otherwise, I don't know if there's a whole lot of difference.
Especially just the deck, I mean, the rest of your structure not really affected.
Right, maybe if it's steel beams, sometimes the gravel will end up on the exterior beams, on the flange or something, it collects on there and does the same thing, it'll hold water, but other than that, I don't really see much. That's why a lot of times that if we do work on a bridge that's on a gravel road, we'll go ahead and pave fifty or a hundred feet inside the bridge, it keeps the loose aggregate from getting on the bridge.
I, I assume that would be the, the answer to my question, it just, and the other thing is thinking about that, most of the time you got heavier traffic on paved roads than you do gravel roads.
Right.
So that would make me think that they're gonna be about even, or.
Right.
To some extent, so.
To some extent, yeah, but a lot of times your county roads gonna be where your crops are, so trucks that see, they're gonna be a lot of grain trucks, so. I mean, obviously, paved roads gonna have a higher volume of them, but. So yeah, your traffic volume, I mean, obviously, a paved road is that way because there's enough traffic that warrants to be paved rather than being gravel.
Okay.
And I noticed too, your gravel roads are really in good condition. A lot of counties we go to, you'll have rough sections or some potholes showing up, so. Obviously, they're going out and grading, keeping it up, and that's, that's an important thing to do. And your drainage is really important on a gravel road, because a lot of times what will happen is the dirt will get built up on the edges, and that holds water right on the edge, so if you keep that cleaned off, and like he was talking about, getting that reclamer, that's gonna pull some of that back into your road, really help with that, so. It's good to hear that you're getting that for a grader.
Okay. Any other questions? Very good information, really appreciate you coming in and sharing that with all of us.
Sure, sure, and we certainly appreciate you guys trusting us to inspect your bridges, and that is something that'll come up this fall, we'll send out an RFP for the next four-year contract, so that's.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Nielsen.
Good morning, Mike Nielsen, project manager, just to update you on a few of the projects that I'm working on. We'll start off with the Justice Center, happy to say we're about fifty percent completion mark for the Justice Center project, about forty-eight now, so hopefully next month we'll be at that fifty percent completion mark. We're two-hundred-and-thirty-six days without a recordable safety incident, and currently, right now, from a safety standpoint, we're de-watering some of the main structure holes that are out there, especially the one in the deep excavation areas, so that area of that site has been restricted for any type of traffic in there. Issues, there's no current issues that we're working on. Unit E had a Joyce issue that has been resolved last week, Unit B Stairwell has been reported completed. We finished up the framing in the basement of the Sheriff's Administration. We now are starting the framing in the administration, in the upstairs administration area. Last week was significant, we ended up placing several of the RTU rooftop units for the HVAC. Was lifted on top of the, the buildings with a large crane, and happy to say we're about ninety percent complete with the dry-in for Unit B. So now that we're out of the ground and, and kind of dried in, things are gonna start going very, very quickly. We continue to focus on the, the kitchen area as well as the infirmary to try to get the sheriff the opportunity to move operations over there. That means we're focusing, I just approved the run for the IT going from that area back to the current switch area, so we don't have to have the new IT room filmed in, so we should be, we should be good in, in getting that running very quickly. The slabs for C begin the week of twenty-six, if the weather cooperates, it may be sooner than that. Footers for the sally quarter being dug as of yesterday, and the masons are gonna start laying the block this week for the outdoor rec areas. Time clock plus, just a couple of things there, happy to say that the new payroll voucher form that combines all of the vouchers together into one has been completed. Kirk from GUTS done that this past week, him and the auditor have been working on that. That was sent out to us this weekend, and the auditor and I saw it, and we're pretty happy with where that stands at this point. There was a small calculation issue with PTO, TCP calculates within three decimal points, to three decimal points, some of the employees are calculating with one or two decimal points, so there's a very, very slim margin of, you could see some errors with PTO, so we're looking into that and getting that resolved, but it's very, very minimal. Setting up a meeting with HR and the auditor's office to discuss overtime one and overtime two rates, some issues that came up with the highway department there, we're gonna be working on that to get that resolved. The K-two-M project, the Needs Assessment project, that report's been done for about a month. Tonight is the meeting there at the fairgrounds at six-thirty, I hope we have a good turnout there to kind of share where we're at. And then as far as the HR NeoGus software project that I'm working on, continue to do the webinars each week and the implementation strategy meetings there, so, any questions?
No, I think it's big news that we got the rooftop units on, because that's held up an awful lot of projects.
Yes, that's you.
Has the muffin monster been installed?
No, that's one of the deep structures that goes in front of B, so we're de-watering now, trying to get the water down to be able to set that structure. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, staff reports, area plan.
Hello, commissioners, just wanted to give you a quick update, there's been a request from the Area Plan Commission to discuss next steps on the comprehensive plan, and that will be likely in this year, on March twelfth, after the county council meeting, so we'd love to have as many of you there as possible for a discussion with the county council or area plan commission yourselves.
Thank you.
March twelfth is the same day as road school, so I don't, I'm planning on being there, I don't know if you guys are.
Which one, his or yours?
Road school.
Yeah, road school.
On March twelfth.
Yeah, that's twelfth and thirteenth in the day, so, okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Max, do you have any, anything else? All right, health department. All good there. HR, nothing there, IT, nope, and highway department, Nick.
Department, County Highway, don't have very much for today. Bond release, request execution of bond release for Communication Corps of Indiana, the amount fifteen thousand dollars. Just needs a signature, I think it's got a Fergoni signature, if I'm correct.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Only other item, I had a quote assigned for repairs on a bucket truck for, that we use for brush cutting. Just had to execute that quote so they could get that work scheduled, so we can get our truck back, significant repairs needed. It's a truck that's twenty-fifteen or twenty-sixteen, these high-wear maintenance items, I guess, that need to be taken care of, and somebody's up in a bucket, everything needs to be correct, so, had to get that quote executed. Only other items I had was just want to make sure I gave you guys an update on the snow fight from the weekend. We did have our trucks out retreating Friday morning from very, very beginning of the day, workday, and continued through the rush hour in the evening as the snow continued to come down. Had it back out Saturday, back out Sunday, so really appreciate our staff and everything that they're doing to do the best they can as the weather comes in, as the wind blew through Saturday and Sunday, had to go back out to some of the same areas they had been before, until we got those warmer temperatures, got everything on, so. Only other thing I wanted to make sure I touched on, so Joe talked about a lot of our bridges and their condition, we could talk for hours about that, and some of the causes and what we can do, but the, the main item typically that this time of year for discussion is re-establishment of the Coon Bridge rate. We tried a few years ago to get it to a, a level that was much higher than what it had been in the past, and then as it went through the budgeting process, something about the state, I'm not really sure, it followed along. We didn't get to that full amount that we were anticipating, so for the history of it, we have one-hundred-and-ninety-four bridges, and they're very expensive, so if you replace one a year, it'd take you one-hundred-and-ninety-four years to get through all of them. They're expected to last about seventy-five to a hundred years, so one bridge is probably more than a million and a half to two million dollars each. We previously got seven hundred thousand dollars a year in Coon Bridge dollars. Last year was up to one-point-two-five million is what the estimated amount was. I don't know what goes into the rate, what it takes to re-establish it, but I know I've had to work with Bob and the county council and Commissioner Reese.
So Debbie and I talked a little bit about this also, and we've, in the past, worked with Baker Tilly on it. I, I think the number we were looking at last, last time we tried to re-establish it, and this was in consultation with Marshall Willboyd also, I think it was going up to, I believe it's either twenty-one or twenty-two cents. It's currently at about seventeen, does that sound right?
Yes.
So this would probably, real rough numbers here, I think it'd probably give them about an extra five-hundred thousand in Coon Bridge. And so how that process works is, if you want to move forward, I'll get in touch with Paige at Baker Tilly and get some estimates on that, and then you'll adopt a resolution in favor of that, then it gets forwarded to DLGF, and we have a public hearing and all that sort of thing, but we also obviously want to let the council know, but Debbie, you can, Debbie and I will work together with Paige on that if you want us to move forward with it.
As, as a reminder, this is inside the levee, so it's not an additional tax, just change.
Correct, yeah, that's important, yeah, it's not raising taxes at all, it's inside the levee, so the council is gonna have to work towards decreasing other funds to, to offset that increase in Coon Bridge, but we'll work with them on that.
Yeah, this is not the new, it's a goal we've had for several years now, so.
You don't need to make a motion or anything, if you just say move forward, then we'll start the process.
Okay, well, I think we need to move forward.
When's the deadline on that, like when does it need to be finished, or something?
It's June first.
It's June first, is that right?
May thirty-first.
May thirty-first. So we, we've still got a little time, but we'll, we need to. It goes fast. It, it does. That was all I had today.
Thank you. Elected officials, anyone? Anything? All right. Next will be public comment. Let's start to say public hearing. Sorry, public comment.
Dave Myers. First of all, appreciate you allowing me to share my notice here today. Again, we're here because you allow us to make public comment and that is appreciated where many of the others aren't quite as friendly. So. So I'm going to, I'll read through this and go from there. So demand, notice and demand of immediate redress and notice of maladministration and trespass against rights of free and equal opportunities for those wishing to run for office. Notice to agent is notice to principal, notice to principal is notice to agent. This is addressed to the Boone County Election Board as well as the Indian Election Commission. You commissioners are carbon copying on it as well as the Indiana House of Representatives, Senate, the Attorney General, Secretary of State, as well as the Supreme Court. I, one of the people, I seen in the Indiana Constitution, Article One, Section One, Republican informed served jurists do sue you, serve you. The Boone County Election Board, and I'm not going to go through names, as well as the Indiana, the Election Commission. This notice by necessity that you provide immediate due care. Please take notice that people have, have all political power and government operates on delegated, delegated authority and that, and that all powers are delegated to you from the people in the Constitution. And people have the right to instruct their government, see evidence below. Maxim of laws referred, of laws referenced herein are from a selection of maxims of law by Charles A. Weisman. Maxim is defined as an established principle or proposition. A principle of law universally admitted and, and being a correct statement of law or agreeable to natural reason. A proposition to, to be, to be all men confessed and granted without proof, argument, or discourse. Black Law Dictionary, First Edition. Indiana Constitution, Article One, Section One, inherit rights. We declare that, that, that people are created equal, all people are created equal and are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights. That among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And that all power is inherent in the people and that all free governments are and of right ought to be founded on their authority and instituted for the peace, safety, and well-being. For the advancement of these ends, people have at all times an indefensible right to alter and reform their government. Maxim of law fifty-one oh. All political power is inherent in the people by decree of God. Thus none can exist except it be derived from them. Maxim of law for B, for, for D. An agent is a person authorized to, to another to act on his account and under his control. Indiana Constitutional, Article One, Section Thirty, run. What rights of assembly in petition, no law shall restrain any of the inhabitants of the state from assembling together in a, in a peaceful manner to consult for their common good nor for instructing their representatives nor for applying to the General Assembly for redress of grievances. Please take further notice. One, elections belong to the people. Indiana Constitution, Article Two, Section Thirteen. And no policy, statute, code, or rule or enforcement thereof can be inconsistent with free and equal elections. The people are aware, are aware that as an elected and appointed servant, you are sworn to uphold the Indiana and the United States Constitution. And any man or woman choosing to run for, run as a candidate of any office is one of the people. As a candidate, as a candidate and one of the people, the candidate has an inalienable rights and liberties because our founders gave, gave us a republican form of government. That form divided the rights of people away from the jurisdiction of our trustees and servants, meaning they can never trespass them. Our rights were accepted, set apart from all grants of authority to handle our affairs and our government only exists to protect the people's rights and our liberty interests. Such protection includes, includes attempts that may be made by political parties using their own rules who may also partner with government servants in such attempts. Indiana Constitution, Article Two, Section One, elections. All, all elections are free and equal. Indiana Constitution, Article Four, Section Twenty-two, local and special laws. The, the General Assembly shall not pass local or special laws regulating the elections of county and township officers and their compensation, providing for opening and conducting elections of state, county, and township officers and designating the places of voting. Indiana Constitution, Article One, Section Twenty-four, Bill of Rights. To guard against any encroachment of rights herein retained, we declare that everything in this article is accepted out of the general powers of government and shall forever remain infallible. Please take, take further notice that the people set up the frame of government in the Constitution and by right have expressed the sole qualifications, citizenship, age, inhabitation qualifications, therein to run for office. Example, Indiana Constitution, Article Four, Section Seven, and also in the United States Constitution, Article One, Sections Two and Three. Can you show me where you have been delegated the authority to restrict the right of free and equal opportunity for those wishing to, to run for office beyond the qualifications that people expressed in the Constitution? Please provide the constitutional provision delegating such authority from, from the people to you. Please take further notice that the rights of the people are unconditional and can never be deprived or restricted. And you swore note to the people to faithfully execute the duties of your office. Failure to, to, to perform these duties of your office according to your contracts, the Constitution, the people, with the people is maladministration and willingly acting in bad faith. Maxim of law eighty-six A, it would be idle and, or entried to say that no right is absolute. Maxim of law for F, faith must be observed. Agent, an agent must not violate the confidence reposed in him. Please take further notice that the people, the people created the Constitution, which are, which are the law of land. In nineteen twenty, or eighteen twenty-eight Webster's Dixon Dictionary, constitution is defined. A free state as being paramount to the statutes and laws enacted by the legislator, limiting and controlling its power. In Black Law's Dictionary, First Edition, law of land is defined as due process of law and everything may, everything may pass under that form of enactment is not the law of land. Through the Constitution, government was created with three branches, legislative, executive, and judicial. The judicial branch may function by the common law and, and has the duty to declare law according to what the people have already expressed in the Constitution. This, this means that the judicial, the judicial branch not functioned by any administrative or legislative tribunal such as election board or commission hearings. This function on or attempt to create policy or rules that are, that are not in, in pursuance to, adhering to, or obeying the Constitution, trespassing the people's observed guaranteed rights. Maxim of law seventy-seven F, no free man shall be deprived of life, liberty, and/or property but, but by lawful judgment of his peers or by law of the land that is by common law. Maxim of law sixty-five U, constitutions and laws proceed the judiciary. Maxim of law sixty-three Y, it is the duty of the judge to declare, enunciate the law, not to enact it or make, make it. And then maxim of law sixty-four F F. A court can only declare what the law is, whether, whether consistent with the law of God or fundamental or constitutional law of society. Please show me in the Constitution where the people delegated the authority of any government servant to interfere with the guaranteed rights of the people to free and equal opportunity for those wishing to run for office by, by smuggling the qualifications such as voting in prior elections, supporting certain candidates, certification from, from a political party or other qualifications contained in any statute, code, rule, policy, et cetera, but not contained in the Constitution. Please take final notice that the people understand that our servants are simple trustees and agents and you have no authority to carry out your own will or the will of any interest that is foreign to the express instructions in the Constitution. It is my wish, order, and demand that you provide remedy by immediately dismissing any candidate's challenge that trespass on the rights of free and equal opportunities for those wishing to run for office. Furthermore, if you disagree with any of the above claims or if you have delegated authority to, to, to things that conflict with the Constitution and maxims of law, please immediately show where you were delegated constitutional authority. All responses not sworn under penalty of perjury are non-responses. If remedy as instructed is, is not given, the people to him who swore note will recognize it as being done purposely with full knowledge, intent, and malice. No court shall be able to rehear this matter, but it shall stand as evidence, truth, and law in a court of record. This notice is sent in peace and love of Jesus Christ that you, that you give due care to the people who hold all political power.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I'll make this very brief.
Please state your name.
Yeah, Control Book Walter, Boone County. Thank you, Seale.
I know you already, but I want it on record. Thank you.
We really appreciate the time of you letting us talk to this important issue about elections. And frankly, because many of you have seen, the election board, they won't, they won't take our questions. They give us very little time to talk about these issues. It doesn't seem they're interested in our concerns. And I know you as a body can't do anything specifically. That's why this is addressed to the election board. But you are all Republicans and you do have influence in this party as we get together. So I just want to share with you briefly, I was just in Hendrix County this morning and I talked to that group down there. And I want to share with you a few things I told them that I was thinking of last night. I was recently in the Iowa, I went to the Iowa caucus, to caucus for Trump. And the reason was is because they said over there, we need a resounding win. We need people to show up and vote in the primaries and in the elections. That evening in the caucus, I went to a Vivek Ramaswamy town hall meeting and someone asked him about his thoughts about election integrity and how we can overcome what we all know is fraud that occurs in elections with mail-in ballot and whatnot. And he said, we need an overwhelming turnout is what he said. The same thing, resounding win, overwhelming turnout, said the same thing. Last night I was in Kentucky and we met with General Michael Flynn and he met with everyone and spoke with everybody. And the same issue came up. And he said the same thing, that we need in a general election seventy-five percent turnout in these elections. So this theme is consistent with people that we're talking about. And last night when I addressed the people in Kentucky, I told them what's happening here in Indiana, which I know is happening nationwide, which is people for the first time are really eager to get involved. And now that we've seen February ninth come and go, we all know it, we all see it, that across the, that our state and across the nation, people are coming out. They're engaging in politics for the first time because they've complained long enough. And now people have said, like they told me in twenty twenty-one, well, if you're so happy about it, why don't you do something about it? And we've been told that long enough, so people are finally coming up and they're doing something about it. And, you know, I'm standing up here about this two primary rule because that affected me. I was removed from the ballot in two thousand twenty-two, not because I wasn't a Republican. No one debated that. In fact, I stayed on the ballot as a delegate to the party. So that wasn't the issue. The issue was matter, just for the matter, the letter of the law. And so I'm a perfect example of how this law is not, its rule is not being used for party rating to keep Democrats out of our party. It's being used to keep conservatives off the ballot in a primary election at a time when we should be encouraging people to get involved and to show up for the primary. And if you study politics and elections and primaries, then you know that when an incumbent is not challenged in the primary, that's a cycle of disenfranchisement. People don't show up for the primary. When in an off presidential election, the election turnout, voter turnout can be as low as four percent. In our counties, four percent, eight percent in a primary. So we should not be discouraging this. We should be encouraging people to show up for primaries, to get involved in politics, particularly people that voted in, in the general election for a long time, but they just maybe have only voted in one primary. The Supreme Court has only, has upheld only a twelve-month hold on candidates to prove that they're a part of a party, twelve months. The Indiana Supreme Court just upheld a six-year waiting period for someone to get involved in politics. Two election cycles for eighty-one percent of Hoosiers that don't vote in the primary. And we know, and this is a Supreme Court case ruling, Anderson v. Celebrez, that candidates act as a rallying point for particular issues, for particular people in quickly changing political environments, like what we've seen right here in the last three years in Boone County, in Indiana, in the United States with COVID. And so that doesn't allow someone, when you have a quickly changing political environment, to get involved right away. The party can arbitrarily keep them off the ballot just based on a rule or the necessity or the need to have just a GOP primary chair or Democrat chair signing off on them. So the last thing I'll say is, you know, it's discouraging to people like me. Again, they affected my first candidacy, but prima facie, I, I thought that this would actually hold people off the ballot. I thought this would be devastating and it would, voter turnout would be even less as fewer and fewer incumbents are primary. But in fact, what we've seen after February ninth is, it's had an opposite effect. This is just in new light as we have candidates challenging positions from Pissington to commitment to Congress all over the district and all over the state. So if you will, that's a silver lining. I don't think it was the intention of the Indiana General Assembly to actually encourage people to, to do this, but it has been the fallout, if you will. And I just want to suggest that there are other options that we have, you guys. There's other options we have, like closed primaries, for example. When we close a primary for a year out, you have to register a year in advance and then you're locked into your party. There's a lot of options that we have to, to address this, this issue. But having a two primary rule, we as Republicans in Boone County should support it. And I'm asking you guys not to support it, support it either. To withhold a candidate for six years is unconstitutional on the face of it. It's unconstitutional based on age because an eighteen-year-old can, or cannot, a twenty-one-year-old cannot run for office because they haven't had time to vote in two primaries. So if you do the math on it, it's flagrantly unconstitutional. But we should not be encouraging this as Republicans and the people that love the law of the land, the Constitution, and adherence. adherence to the rule of law. So thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
I'd like to just respond a little bit to, I sent some stuff to Kaylee because I scrambled to put some stuff together this morning. And that's not going to show up real well, but that is a, well, first let me back up a little bit. People have been coming here since September on all kinds of issues related to elections, and this is just another issue. And in January, there were all kinds of accusations being made about a takeover, a coup, some people referred to these notices as being gibberish, and all that's being done here is that people are lawfully exercising their right to instruct government. As long as the instructions that people are providing us are lawful, we have a duty to respond. Everybody does, in government, who works for government. So, you know, I presented at the request of the people that asked me to do it at the election board meeting in January because they were trying to restrict their ability to speak. They were limiting it to a fifteen-minute window, and they just said to whoever I asked, which there were at least three people that I'm aware of, to just coordinate with each other. And so a couple days before the meeting, Charles was one of them that was going to speak, and there were two others, and he just called me and he said, hey, you've been to all these meetings, will you just present? Because one of the other people was going to present was going to be sick and couldn't be there. So this sketch up here is what I presented to the election board, along with one of the notices that had been submitted. And I'll just go through it real quick, because this has been a result of meetings with these people. And Jeff, you may have seen this, I think, because you met with them. But basically, if we start at the top there where it says that we, the people, we created government, and we got all our authority from our Creator. And the first thing that the people did before they did anything else is they reserved their rights. So that's what's on the left side of that brick wall. And we'll pull it up here in a second, but the very first thing in our Constitution is the Bill of Rights. That is the first thing they did before they did anything else. Reserve the rights and said, you can't touch these, nobody in government can touch these. So then on the right side, and we exercise our rights in the private. And so then on the right side, in the public, the people created a Constitution which is a public trust, and it's a contract that government has with the people, where limited authority, meaning only what is written in the Constitution, is what has been delegated to government, nothing else. If it's not written in the Constitution, it's prohibited. So, and then there's, you know, it breaks it down into three branches, but basically there's trustees, of which we are, and any elected official is a trustee, and before the people agree to pay them, we agree to be bound by that public trust, the Constitution, and we swear an oath to do that. And I was busy reading and presenting, but I was told by other people in the election board meeting that they seemed to scoff at the idea that they're under contract with the people, which is, that's pretty disturbing. But anyway, so kind of way off to the right side, I know you can't read it, but where it says legislative and executive. So the legislature can create statutes and codes, but they have to be in pursuance to what is already said in the Constitution. Can't go outside of what's already been said in the Constitution. It's just instructions to government, and so no statutes can be created that come over on the left side and trespass the people's rights. So, for example, in this notice, in this particular situation, the people already said what the qualifications were to run for office in the Constitution. It's citizenship, age, and inhabitant. That's it. Nothing else. Nothing about voting in a primary or getting a certification from a party chair or whatever else, paying a filing fee or whatever other crazy requirements. And so when somebody tries to enforce that, they're trespassing on the rights of the people, which they swore an oath they would never do. So let's go to the next slide, which is, so that's the preamble of our current Constitution, and I want to focus on Article One. We're just going to talk about Article One, Section One. And it says, this is the people talking, it says, "We declare that all people are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights," or inalienable rights, which means you can't put a lien on somebody's rights, you can't take them away. "That among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." So go to the next slide. That's Section thirty-one, which I'll just say that real quick, that says, "No law shall restrain any inhabitants of the state from instructing their representatives," that's what I wanted to point out there, next slide. So Article One talked about, "Among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." Well, here's a definition of pursuit of happiness. This is what government's created to protect. As used in constitutional law, this right includes personal freedom. If government's creating a statute to trespass the rights to run for office, does that sound like personal freedom? Exemption from oppression or invidious discrimination. There's more into that definition, but I'll stop there and move on to the next thing. So go back to the Article, Article One, Section One. All, that all power is inherent in the people. All, not half, not whatever the election board decides to do on their own, not whatever statutes the legislature decides to pass that trespasses the rights of the people. All power is inherent in the people. That all free governments, free governments, is it free government if they're trespassing your rights? Free governments means it's open to administration by the people. All free governments are and of right ought to be founded on their authority, meaning the people's authority. Charles, do you have the right to take somebody off the ballot?
You don't.
If the people don't have that authority, where did the government, where's the government claiming they got it? Power comes from the people, not the other way around. And instituted for their peace, safety, and well-being. I think I got a definition of peace up there. I can't read that, but, okay, so peace, this is from eighteen twenty-eight Webster's Dictionary. It's important to understand what they defined the terms to be at the time. Peace, what's highlighted there says, "Freedom from disturbance." So go to the next one. So what did they say disturbance was? "In law," at the bottom there, "the hindering or disquieting of a person in the lawful and peaceable enjoyment of his right, the interruption of a right." The whole purpose of government is to institute peace, meaning no interruption of a right. Next one is safety. Peace, safety. Safety is exemption from hurt, injury, or loss. If you get removed from, if you get trespassed, if your rights are trespassed, is that a hurt, injury, or loss? That's the whole purpose of government, is to prevent these things. For the advancement of these ends, the people have at all times an indefeasable, which means it can't be defeated, right to alter and reform their government. That's just Article One, Section One. We haven't even looked at anything else. Article twenty-four talks about, the notice talked about a contract, Article Four, or Article One, Section twenty-four, this is also in the Bill of Rights. "No ex post facto law or law impairing the obligation of contracts shall ever be passed." This is from the people and telling their government, you cannot pass any law that impairs the obligation of your contract, this contract, the Constitution, that's what they're talking about. Article One, Section twenty-five, "No law shall be passed, the taking effect of which shall be made to depend on any authority except as provided in this Constitution." So if it's been in the Constitution, don't have the authority. Next slide, this is from, this is actually from the eighteen sixteen Constitution, this is Article One, which is the Bill of Rights, I was just showing that elections shall be free and equal, appeared in the Bill of Rights in the original eighteen sixteen Constitution when they, when they held a constitutional convention in eighteen fifty-one, they created an Article Two and just expanded on it. But it's, that's a free and equal election is a right of the people. So you said you don't have the authority to remove somebody from the ballot. Let's say, what if I pay you, bribe you, let's just be blunt about it, to take somebody else off the ballot? Does that change the authority you have? So we have, elections belong to the people, right? This kind of goes back to some of the earlier notices. So we have the federal government bribing the state. We have the Secretary of State posting to social media every day, distributing these funds that are coming from the federal government. Federal government doesn't have any authority to run the people's elections. They're bribing the state to change how elections are run from how the people said they are to be run in the Constitution. Next slide, this is, it was read in the notice, this is also from the eighteen sixteen Constitution's Article One, Section twenty-four, it just plainly spells out, that says, "To guard against any encroachments on the rights herein retained, we declare that everything in this article is accepted out of the general powers of the government and shall forever remain imballable." So the very first slide where the rights were reserved on the left side, never to be touched, that's exactly what that's saying. I don't know who has been challenged, I've just heard people have been challenged. I assume the election board's going to hold a hearing. But, I mean, I'll just highlight on what this says. "Nothing on the right side in this sketch, nothing done by government using any of these on the right side can overrule, delay, impair, or trespass the reserved and guaranteed rights of the people declared in the state and federal constitutions. Otherwise, they're acting in maladministration, depriving the people of their rights, and acting in breach of the public trust." That was presented to us months ago, some of these notices. So I guess we'll see. I'm gonna, I intend to find out who's been being challenged, and we'll see where it goes from today.
Thank you for your comments. All right, we will move on to document signing. You never can say that right.
We've got a batch of claims here, including two sets of payroll claims. Anybody wants to see any of those? Any questions, concerns?
Move to your person.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
And then the last thing, we've got a tremendously short volume of mail, small volume of mail today. We've got one, tort claim notice from Ken Dunn for an accident that occurred on I-65 that's already been sent to our insurer, and they've denied the claim. And then we've got a continuation certificate for Western Insurance Company for EMP general contractor, a bond in the amount of $10,000. That's the only mail.
I do have one thing that I, many of you got emails from me last week, but they were not from me. I got hacked on my email account, and then, personal one, then being sent to everyone in the county. And so I apologize for that, but I can't stop it, I don't know why. And then my, also, my Facebook page, I've been locked out of, so do not buy any tickets for George Strait or any other things, because I do not have any of those. And so I apologize for that, but once you're locked out, you can't stop anything.
So you gotta take all those gift cards back.
Whoever you're buying them from, they're making a lot of money off of that, so. I hate that that is going on, but with the system, there's nothing I can do to stop it. I've tried and tried, and it just continues to go. In fact, this morning, through the Northtown Ledger, there's, I had Taylor Swift tickets for sale. I didn't realize that, but anyway, so I just wanted everybody to know that is not me, I have nothing to do with that, and I've done everything I can to stop that, so.
This evening, six-thirty, Fairgrounds, we encourage everybody to be there. Going to talk about the future of Boone County facilities and how they stack up to what we have today. And it's the first step in developing a long-term, long-range plan for our facilities, so.
Other than that, one more motion.
Move to your person.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.